It's the Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, April 17th, 2012. For anybody that's a newcomer this evening, I'd just like to let you know that our staff reports are on the wall to your right. And I encourage you all, please, turn off your cellphones, if you would please, so that they don't interfere with our microphone system. So with that, welcome to all of you. And I will move on to, actually, let's see, we've already had a meeting prior to this to interview our applicant for the Parks and Community Services Commission. So we did unofficially meet prior to that. So we're gonna now have our roll calls, since we didn't do the roll call before.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Councilmember Doren Becker?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton is excused.
Thank you very much. And if you would all join me, those of you who can stand, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we are going to very briefly recess from our official Town Council meeting and agenda to the Yountville Housing Authority's special meeting. So with that, we'll yet again have a roll call to be formal about this.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Councilmember Doren Becker?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
I am here.
Vice Mayor Chilton is excused.
Thank you. So what I'd like to do is offer now, public comment for anyone that would like to speak to the Housing Authority on anything that's not on our Housing Authority agenda. We will be getting back to the regular council agenda and public comment in a moment, but if there's anyone that'd like to speak about the, any issues for the Housing Authority, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'll move on to item four on our Housing Authority agenda, which is the Consent Calendar, which is approval of minutes from January 17th and adoption of a resolution approving a two-year agreement between the Housing Authority of the City of Napa and the Town of Yountville for affordable housing services.
Move to approve Consent Calendar?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that is approved unanimously. Do we have any Housing Authority reports this evening? I'm guessing we do not. No? And we have no public hearings, no scheduled items, so is there a motion to adjourn the Housing Authority meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So with that bit of housekeeping, we will now move back into and reconvene our regular Town Council meeting. Is there any closed session report?
No, Mr. Mayor, there is not.
Thank you. Next up, adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any corrections or changes anyone needs to make on tonight's agenda? If not, is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now we'll offer up public comment again, as we sit here now, looking very similar to the Housing Authority, I realize. But back is the Town Council. So if there's any item, and that cookie looks pretty good, Rob, I must say. Any item that you'd like to bring up to the council that's not on tonight's agenda, I'd welcome you to now. No? So seeing none, I'll move right on to the next item, which is our Consent Calendar of our monthly financial report from March. Is there any action on that Consent Calendar?
Move to approve Consent Calendar?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. We have a pattern going here. Next up, presentations. And first up, I see we have the Chair of the Allied Council with us tonight, Ed Olson, so please welcome and look forward to hearing your monthly report.
Thank you, Mayor Dunbar. I made it just in time.
You did.
Anyway, Mayor, and councilmembers, and staff, and town people, I'd like to just say a few things about what's going on at the veterans' home. Well, there's always new things, but the main thing is, today, we just looked at our new budget for the coming year, and, you know, spent quite a bit of time going with that. We have what was called the MWR Committee, which reviews all of the budgets that has to do with members.
We're just making sure that you're being recorded.
Am I there? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sure, we're good.
Anyway, so that's always interesting, and it's gonna be a much bigger budget than it was last year. And as you probably know, and I've mentioned this before, that the home is looking to be financially very solvent. We have a large amount of money in our MWR, around Welfare and Recreation Fund, bigger than we've had in quite a number of years, in my six years that I've been there currently. And we need to spend some of that down, because if we leave it there, there's always a chance that some state official will figure out some cover way of getting it. And it belongs to the members, and it's what members use totally. So we've got lots of things that will affect the city, of course, and you've heard about a little bit about those. And one thing is, we're building, or going to be building, some outside activities. The bocce ball, we're gonna have a bocce ball court, maybe two. A croquet court.
And sorry, if I could just interrupt you for just a second, Ed, it looks like we are still having some audio trouble with your microphone? So Julie's just gonna...
(inaudible).
If that's...
We have a satellite.
There we go, now you're broadcasting worldwide.
All right, we are live.
So you were talking about your additional activities.
Additional activities, yes, and, you know, a couple of bocce ball courts, hopefully the croquet court, which will be new in the area. And that will probably be on a turf, I mean, it will be artificial turf, because one thing that the Buildings and Grounds Department does not want is any more things to take care of. So we wanna say, well, hey, we're gonna be less to take care of if we fill it up with a lot of things. Like a shuffleboard, a good shuffleboard court, and horseshoe pit, good quality horseshoe pit. So this is all gonna be high-quality, good things. And we've contacted an architect who's working on and working with us on developing the plans. We've got some ideas roughly that is probably gonna, these are really rough numbers, maybe $190,000 or so, to get everything in there. And then, of course, we're working on the fishing pond also, you're aware of that. That is a little further behind, but we've got an architect's cost estimates on the periphery of it, including the picnic area and the shelter there for the fishing area. And we haven't got anything yet of how we're gonna do the pond itself, which is gonna take some, there's not anybody that we've found, somebody that knows, so far, that knows exactly what to do with the pond, and how to treat it, and how to take care of it. It's not just a simple thing as emptying the water and digging it out, because you gotta protect the seal that's there. It's been a long year. It hasn't been used since I've been here, six years, it hasn't been used, so it's got a long ways to go. But I think it's gonna be a great venture. It will be probably around the peripheral, allow for wheelchair access, so that'll be a great asset. And many other things, of course, and we have news at the café over there, we'll probably, there are contracts that they're opening, maybe, I think, this week. Five bids that it's gonna see, hopefully, one of those will work, and that the café will be open shortly. The bowling alleys are out for bid, again, the only person that bid on it wasn't, didn't work, for whatever reason, so that's a little behind, but we're, learn to be patient, and it will happen. So I think that's the main things that we're covering right now. There's always a lot of other little things, but as you know, the member services building is pretty incredible, and when we get the café open and the bowling alley, and we, of course, obviously, hope to integrate more with the townspeople, I think that's one of the things I have been preaching from day one, that the more we get involved with the rest of the town, the better off we are. We're all one, we're all one town. And relative to that, I'd like to throw in a comment about the, I know that this is up for discussion and hasn't been decided yet, and that's the tram, the trolley that picks up people, and I'd like to say, if you look at that hard, you're gonna find that that has incredible benefits, not just for the veterans, but it could tie the community better together, for kids to go swimming, for, on and on. We have veterans that come down and need to shop, and if they could come down on Monday and Tuesday, or whenever it's not available, it would be a great asset. And I think, I really do think, that tying these things together, the more we do that, the more possibilities we have of benefit for your tourist attraction, because the home is a tourist attraction. And there's no reason why you can't advertise it, that I know. And so therefore, you wanna have a way of getting people to be a walking tour, you wanna have people to get out there and be able to get there. I think you really, really oughta think hard that $50,000 would be money well spent. So any questions?
I was gonna bring that up, I'm glad you did, because I know it was brought up at the last Allied Council meeting, and also, there was an issue of concern about whether the trolley would stop at the main bus stop at the top of California Drive, and so we're looking into that, because it's really a service that's primarily run by
Right.
the county transportation and planning agency.
I understand that. And I think there's always ways, you know, we could help enhance it, whatever it takes. I mean, if they can't come up there, and you have to, can't go that far and come up all the time, maybe, you know, there's always ways of working around that, but...
And then the other thing I was gonna bring up, if you didn't, was the State's Master Plan Review that's been happening. We had a couple meetings about that.
Oh, yeah, by the way, a little detail. There has been this 30-year plan that's been in process for quite some time, and will be continuing, it won't be finished until the end of the year. And, of course, some of you have been there and been part of that, and it's been a little bit interesting for the veterans there, a lot of them just can't get it into their head that they're talking about stuff in the future. So, of course, all they wanna talk about is, what about our food? What about? And that's always an issue, because, you know, we've been living with the same food budget for six years, $8 a person for all the meals, and that's getting pretty low, and so we hope that eventually we'll get more money for that. But I think the 30-year plan looks really good to me, I think they've got some excellent ideas to develop this property in a way that will be beneficial, not only to the veterans, but to the town itself. I think if you're thinking out of the box, there's lots of possibilities that would work. For instance, if they have, develop areas that are for, new areas that are for the staff, which they already have some houses, but they tore all those down and built some new areas, well, if they build them in such a way that they could be, if we need to expand the home and get for more people, then if that stuff is built in such a way that, okay, well, wait a minute, we have to take it and use it for veterans, and they could move those people out and build something else, but, you know, if they think that way, that, hey, let's make sure it's, we're not bogged down with something that can't be used for other things, so I think it has some great advantages. 30-year plan is, most of our veterans up there probably don't think that far ahead, but I think it's gonna be good. They've got so many great ideas, and of course, you know, it's a long ways off, like they pointed out, it's gonna take at least three years even to get to the point where somebody's looking at, let's do some of these things, so a lot of time involved. Anybody else with any question?
Thank you for that report. Are there any other follow-up questions?
Anybody from...
I think we're good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the report.
All right, bye.
We're gonna move on next to our Cal Fire Public Safety Quarterly Report. Lieutenant Chief Parks, welcome.
The mic wouldn't be working for this one. Good afternoon to the Mayor and the Council. For the first quarter of 2012, your fire station responded to 374 calls total for the town. The town breakdown itself was 63 medicals, seven public assists, a vehicle accident, two fire alarms, a miscellaneous fire, a hazmat call, and a tree down. The breakdown for the town versus the county and the vets' home is 76 calls for the town, 143 to the vets' home, 151 to the county, and four is mutual or auto aid to the city in Napa. So the only significance there is, for the town, the numbers are staying about the same. You may notice that the vets' home numbers have come up considerably, they have roughly tripled in the last three to six months, and that's strictly due to a procedural change with the county EMS system. The calls themselves are the same number that vets' homes always had, but the EMS agency and the new ambulance provider are doing things a little differently, and some funding issues at the Hold'em in Hospital have changed the way they've had to do business, so we're responding up there a little more than we used to. The crews are actually really happy about it, it's actually been a positive experience, we hope, for both sides. Other than a couple of, for major events or significant events, other than a couple of donation dinners, which we're always happy to do, the big news for this quarter was obviously, the 200-acre wildland fire, vegetation fire, you could see pretty much due east. 200 acres for February is really unusual, obviously, even for Southern California, but just because of the lack of rain at the time, it burned a little better than anybody expected. And then for the first two weeks in March, we had four structure fires, which, again, just no connection, no relation, no real common reason, but just an unusual high surge. So they were different areas throughout the county, mostly rural, except for the one just off of Big Ranch, and that kept everybody busy for the first part of March. I think the last thing I just wanted to point out was, for those people applicable in the town, or just outside the town limits, the chipping program has begun again, is a free service provided by the county. I believe the information is also on the town website, if I'm not mistaken, if not, I'll get it to Julie, but the website and the phone number are listed in the report and on the website. And you can just, you call, you set up an appointment, and the crew will come chip all your brush that you cut for you.
Great. That wasn't too painful, was it?
No, it always is, but...
Any questions or comments about the report?
Thank you.
No, thank you. It'll be interesting to see how this fire season progresses with the type of weather we've been having throughout this winter, so I know you're all paying very close attention.
Precip numbers are back up, especially like in the eastern areas, they say they're back up to about average, we're still watching Southern California a lot, too, because that's still gonna, obviously, that affects northern and southern, so you're right, it's gonna be interesting.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Sheriff Department Public Safety Quarterly Report, and it's our pleasure to welcome back Sergeant Bellmer. It's been a little while.
Always love following Chief Parks. Quiet quarter, it was relatively, if you see the report, I kind of compared it to the same time last year. Not a lot of difference between the two. The only major difference in the quarters was, we almost doubled, not quite, we had about 450 calls for service last year, and same time this year, we had about 700. So we did a lot more calls for service during the quarter, but if you look at the crime stats, they were generally the same. We didn't go up a lot in arrests, everything was either the same, or some people went down. So I pretty much say it all the time, I think the visibility of us out there, the more deputies in town, the station in town, has just really made us a much more part of the community, and people realize that. We've got a, we had a few significant events during the quarter, we had the robbery at Red, which I think it served a couple of purposes. One, I think it kinda opened people's eyes, that, you know, we're not a little sleepy town anymore, things are gonna happen, and maybe we start, have to start looking at better security for businesses and things like that. But on another note with that robbery, and this is my personal opinion on this, having, I bartended waited tables for a lot of years before I became a cop, and I've been a cop for 26 years. So this is the first time I've ever seen a restaurant hid from the back after it was closed. There's not a lot of motivation to do something like that, you're not gonna get a lot of money. And when you start talking about high-end restaurants, everything's almost credit cards, so you're not gonna get a lot of cash. So somebody had to know when they were gonna have to draw for the bar, where most of your cash receipts will be, what time, kinda procedural stuff. So I'm really leaning towards more of a, somebody that worked there, or information from somebody that worked there. So, and that's what they're kinda looking at right now. And then, we did have Deputy Valente arrested a gentleman at the end of March for possession of stolen property, actually, a stolen car. We contacted him, wanted to vacant homes, and came out, and lo and behold, the car was stolen out of Lake County. So he went to jail, and is still in jail. So significant for, maybe not for other places, but for Yountville it is, we don't get a lot of it. So it really was a good quarter for stats all around. I just wanna kinda, if anybody's watching, I wanna highlight the fact that we're getting a lot of solicitors right now, this time of the year, we get a lot of newspaper solicitors, magazine solicitors, and 99% of them are scams. You're giving them money, you're not gonna get any magazines. Check the permits, they're not gonna have one from town, we very rarely get anybody to get a permit, and give us a call. They usually don't make it more than three or four houses before we get a call, but if everybody's aware of it, it'll happen even faster, and we can get them out of the area faster.
So this is walking door-to-door, as well as potentially phone?
It's mostly, right now, it's walking door-to-door. Weather gets nice, they hit the streets, they started in the county. This weekend, we had a few calls in the town, but it'll pick up, it's kinda like the season for it. Most of it, like I said, 99%, if you look online, for who they're representing, it ends up being a scam of some sort, so...
And I realize, the one comment I wanted to make, it's this quarter, because we just had the retirement of Sheriff Cofer, and that was here at our community center, which was really our great pleasure to be the host site for that, but also, I attended the induction of John Robertson as our new sheriff.
Correct.
If it'd been the undersheriff, so...
We're looking for some good change. It's always nice to have new people in certain positions. John has been in the department for a long time, and I think he understands the pulse of the department, and I think he's gonna go in a good direction, so we're all looking forward to it.
Great. Any other follow-up to the report?
I just have one...
Officer Dornbecker?
One question, excuse me. Hello, Keith. When you say that the calls were up by a substantial amount, but crime was down, what kind of calls were, can you give us a sort of a breakdown of what people were calling about?
Calls vary from barking dog complaints to, you know, to the robbery. It could be anything, anything someone calls dispatch for and asks for us to either give them a call or respond to their house or business, would be a call for service. So we generate our own calls, like making traffic stops or citations, whatever we do, that's not counted in calls for service. Calls for service specifically, calls to dispatch or to the office, where we'll, you know...
And they were up significantly?
They almost doubled, and they went from about 450, well, not quite doubled, 450 to about 700, so they're about 250, which, you know, just, you get more people. We had a very, very nice winter, if you would, you know, very little rain for a long period of time, so we had a lot more weekend people than we normally would this time of the year. So with a lot of people, you get a lot of calls for service.
Well, thank you.
So just to follow up again on the concern about the magazine subscriptions, scammers that might be around, and it's not, we don't wanna make it sound like a total epidemic, but how would you like people to respond to that, I'm assuming not necessarily a 911 call, but is there, what's the preferred way that they would contact you if they're...
Dispatch number would be, you can call the office directly, if we're there, we'll head right out, that's 944-9228. And if someone's in the office, or, you know, Donna's in the office, she can just get us by radio and we can respond, or just call the dispatch number, the county dispatch, 253-4451. And again, they'll dispatch us by radio and we'll go take it out. Or you can do, as Louis says, call me at home, and then I call somebody and get them out there anyway, so...
Probably, that's probably the third...
It's probably the fastest way, call my cellphone, and I call Deputy and he goes to take care of it. Beauty of a small town.
We won't encourage that for the general public, but...
You don't have to encourage it, it's done anyway, so...
Yeah. All right, well, thank you very much, and welcome back from your medical leave.
It's glad to be back, thank you.
You'll be on that bicycle soon, right?
Yeah.
All right.
To myself.
Thank you. Next up, Yountville Housing Authority Annual Report. Welcome.
Hi there. All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, I am Andrea Clark from the Housing Authority of the City of Napa, and I've come this evening to give you my annual report on our services, our housing services agreements. The town contracts with the Housing Authority annually to provide housing services in a variety of different types. We provide technical assistance to you related to the different housing functions, monitor the for-sale affordable housing units and the rental affordable housing units, and also then keep track of any foreclosure actions or the things that might be going on, and respond to any kind of calls that the staff may have to us and need assistance. First of all, I wanted to tell you a little bit about our, one more? There we go.
There we go.
I wanted to tell you about our countywide activities that we perform. One of our main functions is our rental assistance program through the Housing Choice voucher program. And annually, HUD provides us with funding for this program in the form of grants, and this year, our budget for the rental assistance program is $10 million, $10.4 million, and that provides about 1,254 vouchers countywide. In the town of Yountville, we have 39 households that are voucher holders that we assist with rental assistance, and this is an increase of 24 vouchers in this past year. And unfortunately, we do have another 43 households in Yountville that are on our waitlist. And our waitlist is, because of what's going on in the economy, our waitlist has become quite extensive, and so, but we are hopeful that these households will move up on our waitlist. Along with our rental assistance program, we do have, that the, each voucher holder sits down with their housing technician each year, and we recertify their income, and we make sure that we review all the rules with the program. And then each rental unit that is part of the rental assistance program is inspected to make sure that the unit is in good health and safety standards, and the inspectors will make recommendations for the tenant that may need to do things, and also for the landlord that may need to make repairs or do some cleaning, and then that is followed up to make sure that those items are being taken care of. Next slide, please. And then this last year, we were awarded from HUD an additional $138,000 There we go. And to manage our family self-sufficiency program. And this program provides some technical help for our voucher holders to receive job retraining, or financial, or budget training, and in the town, we do have one Yountville household that is participating in this program. And then also, part of these grant funds that we receive, HUD does give us a certain dollar amount to be able to have matching savings funds for each of the participants, and so the goal is to be able to help the households to be able to get off of government subsidy. And so, you know, again, we may provide job retraining, maybe some educational or counseling, that type of assistance, and we have two full-time workers in the office that are assisting with that. And then also, this last year, we received an additional 50 vouchers, about $392,000 each year for our family unification program. And we are working in conjunction with Napa County Health and Human Services and the Welfare Department to be able to help those families that maybe their children have had to be taken out of the home, and/or they need to be able to have decent housing to be able to bring those children back into the home. And then a certain number of those vouchers are also set aside for the youth that are coming out of foster homes and need to have a place to live. And they will be, continue to have counseling and case management through the Napa County Welfare Department. And I'm proud to say that our Housing Authority was awarded the High Performance Status again for the third year in a row from HUD, and agencies are awarded this status when they can effectively and efficiently manage the program. The other area of county activities that we provide to you is being a participant in the Continuum of Care Program, and this is for services for the homeless. And I sit on that committee, and we... on that committee and we meet once a month. And all the area, Napa County area nonprofit agencies that provide services to the homeless, either through case management or through housing, we meet each month and, you know, kind of discuss all of our different services and brainstorm about how we might be able to have better services. We work with HUD and are mandated by HUD to come up with a plan to end homelessness. And we have continued to be able to receive annual renewal grants of up to about $500,000 to be able to provide housing assistance and case management for the homeless. And then this last year, our Continuum of Care Group also, along with County Health and Human Services, worked with the Yountville Veterans Home to be able to provide two beds on an expedient basis for a homeless veteran. And then, once they're placed there, then Health and Human Services will continue to case manage with the veteran to be able to find them permanent housing and then be able to help them whatever other type of needs they may have to be able to stabilize and sustain their housing. And then the next area that I wanted to talk to you about is our standard housing services. In this area, we provide compliance monitoring, like I mentioned before, for your affordable housing units. And in the area of the for-sale units, each year we send a letter out to the owners and we have them self-certify their, that they are still owner occupying the residence. We verify that they're keeping their homeowner's insurance current and their taxes are being paid. And then, from time to time, we will collect utility billings to, you know, just as an extra verification process. We also respond when any of the homeowners are refinancing their property to make sure that that refinance on that first mortgage loan is not exceeding what that affordable price is on the property. And then managing foreclosure actions. So, this last year, we've been managing that and looking at the foreclosure action that's been happening on Seven Jasmine. And as you know, we weren't able to be too successful in negotiating the bank to rescind that foreclosure. And we've been trying to persuade the bank now that is the owner of the property to sell it, the unit, to another first-time home buyer at the affordable price. So, we've been doing a lot of talking between the people at Bank of America and it's an ongoing process, yes. And most recently, too, we've been reviewing the regulatory documents or the affordable housing documents on the Yountville Square subdivision. We have a homeowner there that is trying to refinance her first mortgage loan and been working with the deputy town attorney to make sure that your, the town documents have all the covenants covered so that in the place of a refinance, we don't have another situation like Seven Jasmine. Yeah. So, we've been working with the title company and the lender on the first and everybody to be in agreement with the documents. And in the area of the rental project monitoring, we've been reviewing all of the, with the owners, reviewing the affordable housing agreements, and also doing monitoring and site visits at the different projects, verifying that they are renting the units to, at the correct income level and at the correct rents. And we've had some conversation recently with the Hotel Yountville and the Hopper Creek rental units there, and giving some ideas on how they might be able to rent the units, and also just giving them some technical assistance and training. They tell me that only about half of the units are rented. So, they indicated that they were going to be doing some more marketing now that the winter is over and perhaps people are more likely to be moving. And then lastly, I wanted to report on any kind of technical assistance. Again, we've been monitoring the foreclosure and working with the deputy town attorney and also working with the bank on that unit, and trying to also draft up some different types of subordination agreements and other agreements to protect the town's covenants on the affordable units. And it's been a little bit of frustrating process because everybody wants their, what their guidelines say, but it's also been a good learning experience for me, too. And our housing manager and myself, we've, we are available at any time if any of the staff have questions and provide any kind of technical assistance that you may need. And we're continuing, and we're looking forward to continuing our relationship with the town, and I'd be glad to answer any kind of questions that you may have for me.
Questions from the council? Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I just have one. Thank you for the report. What other municipalities do you guys support besides Yountville?
All the towns in...
Every city, town, in the county as well, obviously. Okay. Yeah, I thought that's what you told us last time, I just didn't recall, so thank you.
Councilmember Mueller?
I do have a question. You said that you have a very long waiting list with your organization, but the Hotel Yountville seems to need to do more advertising to get people. Can you guys maybe talk and share some lists? Is there any reason that can't happen?
We have shared their flyer with our tenants, and then the owner of the facility decided not to accept Section 8 vouchers there.
Okay, thanks.
So, that's a little bit of a unique situation where they, the property owner there built the housing, so they have more control over the renting of the space, correct? Versus the folks that have, at Hotel Yountville, is that accurate or not?
Well, I think each owner, property owner, has control over who they rent to. They just have limitations on the income that their tenants can make according to what their regulatory agreement states. And also then limits on how much rent they can charge, again, according to their contract or their regulatory agreement.
And I'm sure you also run into some issues of the size of the families that are, I think, Councilmember Mueller, talking about your voucher list, waiting list, I believe. And so there are a few different reasons maybe that those can't completely merge into successful housing opportunities.
It has a lot to do with the amount of funding and how many vouchers that we can, are actually issued. And so, we probably have 10 times the need compared to what HUD gives us each year. But, you know, we have to work within that parameters and be able to prioritize, you know, try to figure out who has the most need at this point in time.
Any other quick, Councilmember Dornbecker?
Please, just one. I was wondering, in the agreement with the owners of the properties, I was under the impression that there was some sort of ratio of Section 8 to other levels of owners, you know, rental or ownership in terms of qualifying. Is that not true?
I don't recall that there it is.
Actually, Councilmember, we have a ratio in what's known as affordable, below-market, various ranges like that. That is different than Section 8 program.
I see.
So, the Section 8 program is an option of the property owner, completely different the other elements. We have very low, low, low mod, and that is, you're correct. We do have a ratio and there's a distribution all the way from moderate and near-market to address, but that's different than the Section 8 program.
Okay. Yeah, we try to encourage the property owners not to accept a Section 8 voucher to pay the rent on the affordable housing units, because they can take that voucher anywhere and get their assistance with paying the rent. However, there's only a few number of affordable units in each of our communities, and so we truly try to encourage the owners to use that voucher for their market rate unit instead of the affordable unit. And that way, the people that are on the waitlist still have an opportunity to have some type of affordable housing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Some good clarification right there at the end, I think, because three of us seem to have a similar question. And I think that answer...
Did that help?
...touched on all of them, so...
Thank you very much for the report and your forward...
Thanks very much for the report.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And I should have asked this before we go to our next presentation, but if the public did have any question or comment about any of the reports you've just heard, especially the most recent one, since Ms. Clark is still here. Is there any specific question or comment? No? Thank you. With that, then, we'll move on to our final presentation of this evening. A very familiar face to this room and this town, the Yountville Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Report from Executive Director Cindy Sosserman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Cindy Sosserman. I'm the Executive Director of the Yountville Chamber of Commerce, and I should know all this stuff by heart, but the Yountville Chamber of Commerce is governed by a volunteer board of directors who actively markets the town of Yountville, its chamber members, and promotes tourism and local businesses while contributing to the quality of life for our community. That's our mission statement. And I want to emphasize the term volunteer board of directors. Our bylaws indicate we should have nine board members consisting of a president, a vice president or president-elect, secretary, and treasurer. Those officers comprise the executive board. The remaining board member, chair, board members chair various committees such as the nominating committee, bylaws and budget review committees, and any other special committees appointed by the president. We currently have three working subcommittees. The first one being the Visitor Information Center Review Committee, another committee, the Events Review Committee, and the third committee, the Membership Revenue Review Committee. These committees are making a huge difference in the daily operations of the chamber. We invited, we've invited and we're hoping our board members could attend tonight's meeting so that we would have an opportunity for you to meet them. And I would like to introduce those who are here tonight. I believe Board Member Cindy Gates with Gates Estate is here. Cindy? We also have Cindy Crater, who is the Board Secretary from Napa Style, Cindy. And at this time, I will introduce our Board President, Kacha Luffelholt, who will share with you a few comments about the chamber.
Thank you. I'm Kacha Luffelholt. I'm a local resident as well as chair of the chamber president. And I am so excited. We've got a fabulous board, and we're making some changes, and our committees are putting in a lot of work. I also wanted to recognize our executive board member, Steve Rogers, who is a joy to have on our board and has been very valuable to our board. We are, our Visitor Center Committee has just moved right ahead. We had a retreat at the beginning of March, and you will be seeing a fresh face of the visitor center. It's all being painted right now and new flooring put in. We wanted to make it more visible, more inviting, more attractive to serve our visitors when they come to town. So, look for changes there. You should see something next week. But there'll be some other modifications to the outside to make it more inviting and welcoming. Part of our Visitor Center Committee is also looking at staffing, is how to better serve, staff and training, how to better serve our visitors as they come through the door. And even during the remodel, they were coming through the door. So, even though we were closed, they were, we were serving them. The next thing is our Events Committee, and Mayor Dunbar has come to one of our committees, our first committee meeting. So, we're taking a fresh look at our events. As you know, we've been weighed out the past two cases in Yountville. So, we are looking at what we can do to better serve our community and to better serve our visitors and the purpose behind the events. So, these are definitely going to involve the community feedback and our business members' feedback about how we are going to revise at least the taste of Yountville coming up. And our membership development and retention and revenue, we're often picking up that to, once again, how better serve our members. Any questions after our report?
Any specific questions about the chamber report? No? And I do just want to mention, we're going to go ahead and get a brand-new microphone, because it seems to be cutting in and out. But I did want to just touch on the e-newsletter that goes out, just different ways that you're able to outreach both the business community and the local residents. As soon as we can get you a microphone that works, I'll welcome your answer. Just different ways people can be hearing about the changes and the activities that the chamber is involved with. And if maybe we can just hand over one of the other wire mics in the meantime, if they'll reach. There we go.
Okay, thank you. There is a newsletter that we put out. Comes out twice monthly, electronically to our members. If you're a chamber member, you will receive it. Sometimes in the Yountville Sun, we will publicize our activities or utilize that. There is our PR firm for the chamber and for the town of Yountville to promote the town of Yountville is Edelman, and they promote events that are going on. So, it's not just local, it's also neighbors to our Napa neighbor and our St. Helena neighbors and our Napa Valley neighbors, and our local, or more local Sacramento, San Francisco, and nationwide travelers, visitors to our town. As far as, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does.
There's Facebook, there's, we're tweeting and...
Yeah, just, for example, if people are walking by or driving by, wondering what's going on with the Welcome Center and the facelift that it's getting, just so...
How would they find out?
...find out. When is it finished? When is it, you know, officially reopened, things like that?
That remains to be seen. Hopefully by Friday. Certainly by Saturday.
And I'm guessing that the Yountville Sun might write a little something and have a photo or something as well. You never know, but...
You never know.
Word gets around town fairly quickly.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you, Cindy, also. And board members that attended tonight. So, we're going to move on, and hopefully we'll have a microphone that works for our one public hearing this evening. Before we get into this, I believe we do have one conflict. Councilmember Mueller?
Yes, Mayor Dunbar. I have real property within 500 feet of this, the Bardessano Development, so I'll need to recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay, thank you. While Councilmember Mueller is stepping down, I'll just read this item. Bardessano Development Agreement Amendment Number Two Request at 6526 Washington Street. Consideration of approving an amendment, well, then it's a bunch of code words, so we'll just get right to it. Let's go to a staff report.
Thank you. This is a request to, for the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement for the Bardessano Project. There was an earlier Amendment Number One that dealt with the addition of a restaurant and spa, and along with the meeting rooms having them open to the public. The nature of this amendment request is to add the option on Lot Four, Parcel Four, which is the residential parcel, to allow that to be used in association with the inn as up to two inn units within the footprint of the single-family residence that was approved on that parcel. And I'll cover a little bit of the history here. The Bardessano Project consisted of four lots. Lot One was the affordable housing lot. Lot Two was the passive park down in this corner where KS Pampalona is located. Lot Three was the in-large inn parcel with 62-unit inn. And Lot Four was approximately 10,000-square-foot irregular-shaped parcel up in the, down in the southeast corner of the parcel. And it was for a single-family residential use. The request, and I show you, cover a little bit of the design of this building that was approved by the town council for design review back in November 3rd of 2009. It's a, entered here on the motor court off of the back parking lot that you come down the service road off of Fennell Road. And this is the corner, the southeast corner of the parcel. This is the bridge that goes over Hopper Creek. The house is a master bedroom, a guest bedroom, garage, two-car garage, office, and then over in this area, you have the kitchen and dining room, living room areas. This is a rendering showing a plan view of the dwelling... room, living room areas. This is a rendering showing a plan view of the dwelling on that corner. And the takeaway on these renderings is the design of the single-family dwelling was intended to complement the design of the inn in terms of roof shape, the flat roofs, the use of materials of the wood and the black metal, whoops, the fenestration, doorways matching the materials used at the Bardessano. Cedar siding. Again, these are elevations here, you know, probably pop out as well as the renderings. This would be from the parking lot of the Bardessano going into the motor court, and the garage is over here. Front entryway is here. This is the south side, excuse me, east side garage, and then this would be the pathway coming along and then turning the corner here.
So if I could, sorry, just to interrupt, perspective on that last view for folks in case it's not clear, because they're basically not representing houses that are in the foreground here or the fact that that's Hopper Creek running down where the landscaping is correct?
Yep.
Just to give people some perspective.
Hopper Creek along here with the pathway, and then the pathway continues along this side.
Thank you.
That's the corner there. You're coming along Hopper Creek here. The pedestrian bridge would be over here. So you can, you can see from these renderings, the use of materials, the stone, the cedar siding, the black metal, the roof shapes, very complimentary to the design of the Bardessano. This is the south side along the pathway, or the pathway would be here. Same side. Yeah, this would be the, on the west side. So the request is to, as I noted, to have up to two transient use units within the footprint and using that same approved dwelling for that purpose, having the option to do that. This would be in addition to the option to use it as a single-family dwelling. It'd be one or the other. They, the applicant would need, in terms of the Bardessano Master Development Plan Use Permit, come in and be approved for amending the use permit to add two units to the inn use. The specifics of the interior floor plan, how much change they would be proposing at that point would be brought forward at that application. They do propose that design you reviewed there that was approved in '09 and that footprint and the grounds as you saw them. So that's essentially the request. The only other attachments, or I should say the attachment is the ordinance that, along with its attachment, which is the recordable document that would go along with Amendment Number Two, they are requesting that the Design Review Approval, which is a five-year approval and will normally expire in 2014, would be extended three years to 2017. So that's November 3rd of 2017. We have a condition. We've imposed a couple of conditions that relate to if it's developed as a, however, whatever use it's developed as, that would set the impact fees. There are slight differences between the uses as far as how the fees are calculated, and that's paid at time of building permit. Also, if they do not develop this parcel within a year, the requirement would be to install temporary landscaping, do the approval of the town staff or the DTRB, and otherwise to keep the state of that parcel in a weed-free, safe condition.
So we are, you're asking us to discuss and, and vote on the change in use from residential to, I want to make, want to make sure we're all clear, including the public, on the step you're asking for us tonight, and then the future step that would still need to be approved as an amendment to the Development Agreement?
The action before you tonight is Amendment of the Development Agreement, which sets the stage for bringing forth a future application to amend the use permit to allow the use of transient use to occur within that approved structure. You're not approving anything other than amending the Development Agreement at this point. You're not approving inn units in the structure. So that's, that's the action before you is amending the Development Agreement to allow such an application to come forward in the future.
And that's the clarification I was looking for, because the details of any amendment are at a future date, only if we approve the ability to amend it at a future date. Okay, so this is a fairly general approval or disapproval, and then we get to a more specific use amendment.
And as noted in the staff report, the Town Council, should such an application come forward, has full discretion to approve or deny that application at a future date.
So there's no guarantee of a future action based on what happens tonight?
Correct.
And I want to also ask, just to clarify the existing condition requirements, does there exist now a screening requirement for lack of development of the site? And, question mark?
No, there is not a specific requirement, and this parcel is pretty much in the status of any vacant parcel where it has to be maintained in a way that's not a hazard, tall grass and debris on the, on the site. But other than that, there's no specific requirement for screening or otherwise landscaping it.
Okay. Are there other questions of Council about the staff report before we open the public hearing up to the public itself? No specific questions? So what I'd like to do is open the public hearing portion of this item and invite the applicant to start off by addressing your request, and then we'll open it up to additional members of the public for discussion.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Steve Bardessano, I live at 43 Landy Way here in Yountville, and I'm here representing the Bardessano Brothers LLC. They are the landowners on which the Bardessano Project has been, has been built. And I think Bob Tierney has been pretty clear as to what we're asking for, but I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions that you have. We had intended to build a house on there, a home on there for ourselves, and some of you may remember our application, and we're very serious about that, but a lot has hap, a lot happened to the housing market in the meantime, and, and we just decided that at our age and with the difficulty and cost of building a new home there, we would probably look out in the, in the resale market, and we did, and we bought here in Yountville, and we're back. So we have this property there, and it's, that's fairly well-attended, but not as well-attended as it should be. And of course, we would want to use it for something. It seemed like the most reasonable thing to do, given the family members and all, and our own circumstances, would be to talk to the hotel people about the possibility of incorporating it into that, that development. And I know Bob's been pretty clear about what this action would constitute, but it's even a little tighter than that. You're not going to, if you approve this, you're not going to create a standalone commercial use down there. The only way those rooms could be built would be if they became a part of the use permit, which is now held by the hotel people. So it would just be an extension of the hotel. I think that's a pretty, a pretty important point, frankly, and one that we completely agree with. Obviously, we're not, we nor the hotel people are prepared to run over there and start building those very, very quickly. It, I'm sure that's clear to you when we asked for an extension of the, of the approval that you had on the, on the Design Review. On the other hand, you know, if it, we would like to see that move ahead as quickly as we could. I think all of us would. The one additional thing that's happened here in this, in this application is a requirement that if we do not do something over there in terms of a development within 12 months, we've got to do some, some temporary landscaping. So something will happen to beautify the property in some way or another if this is approved. And then, of course, once we, we and the inn folks are able to move forward, and that involves a number of things, they would be back here with their use permit and request the amendment to the use permit, which would include the development of that and all the particulars that would be affiliated with that development.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Bardessano?
I just have one. Thanks, Steve, for the update. I think I understand the context and I just want to make sure. I mean, is it still the intention to have a single-family residence there, or is it just the converting it to the option of additional units?
I think, I think the way I put it is, we don't have any plans to build a single-family residence there at the moment.
Okay.
We have, you know, we didn't want to give up the right to do that if that became the alternative, because the plans that the hotel have are pretty, pretty fluid right now. But you can't, I mean, you simply cannot hear, you all cannot hear a proposal to add rooms and amend their use permit without the approved use of the property being satisfied first.
Right.
So this is sort of the first step in a several-step process.
Okay. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And are there any other members of the applicant team or, I don't know if the, and then we'll open it up.
Jim Tredway and Bill, and our person that I know some of you have seen before, Betsy, Betsy Strauss is here. I don't think Betsy has anything. Jim, would you like your...
And, and also, Mr. Tredway, if you'd be more comfortable sitting down, we can slide a microphone over to this desk here?
No, I'm fine. I'm fine. It just takes me a minute. Sorry, I just had ache surgery. You know, I'm not very well dressed either. But the Veterans Home is in good shape. I'm going to be there one day myself. It's nice to hear it's healthy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Jim Tredway. I'm the General Manager of Bardessano Hotel, Restaurant, and Spa. I'm also Vice Chairman of Benchmark Hospitality, which is the management company that operates Bardessano, and I'm also a member of Yountville Investors LLC, which is the ownership entity for Bardessano. Steve and we are very close, and we've, we've been talking about this parcel of land for, for some time, this home site. And when we got wind of the, of the belief that Steve is not going to develop a home there, we thought of a purpose that would, that would significantly benefit Bardessano and the investors. When Bardessano was developed, it had two programmatic weaknesses in terms of a luxury hotel. And we compete most often with Meadowwood, Calistoga Ranch, and Aube de Soleil. That's our proverbial comp set. What they have that we don't have are luxury suites. We would, we would call them celebrity suites. So anytime someone who comes to the Valley, who has a contract rider, and I'm thinking specifically of Julia Roberts, but there've been many, many others, they don't, they can't stay at Bardessano because our largest suites there are 850 square feet, and those are our six toufa suites. Celebrities have deals with their employers where they don't stay in less than 2,400, 2,000 square feet, 3,000 square feet accommodations. So we are, for lack of a better term, aced out of the celebrity business that comes to the Valley and, and the very high net worth individuals who simply don't stay in suites less than 2,000 square feet. So that, that's a programmatic weakness. The lift for us is in average rate. The vision for us is in that same footprint, that same structure that Stephen Patty designed some time ago. From an interior use standpoint, to be divisible into two roughly 1,800, 1,900 square feet suites, that then could be combined into one very large, say 3,900 or 4,000 square-foot suite. And had we had that since day one, we would have done more business, and we would have made an impact on our, on our competitors. Those three that I mentioned, Meadowwood, Aube de Soleil, and Calistoga Ranch. So what we're asking for, what we're, right now, we're asking you for, I guess we're asking you for also, is the ability to develop, in the hotel business, we call them keys, two more keys, which would take our room count up to 64 from 62, and then those two keys could be combined into one super suite, for lack of a better phrase. The other programmatic weakness we're addressing now, working with Bob, and that is the, the development of a little fitness center, on-property fitness center. That was just overlooked in the development, and something that our guests have told us repeatedly, that they don't like going across the street to Yountville Fitness Center, that something we should have on property, and we agree for a luxury hotel. We are already the third highest performing hotel in, in all of the Valley, Napa and Sonoma Valley, and we measure performance by occupancy times average daily rate. Just multiply those two, and you get something we call RevPAR, which is an acronym for Revenue Per Available Room. There are only two hotels in, really in Northern California, and those being Calistoga Ranch and Aube de Soleil, that outperform Bardessano. We can perform better with these suites, and we can add value to the investors' investment, and Steve Rogers can tell you perhaps better than I can what the contribution of Bardessano is to the town of Yountville's coffers. It's significant. This would make it more significant. So I probably talked too much, but that's, that's our rationale. We would, one of the things that I'd be concerned about, if I were a neighbor of Bardessano, I would be concerned about noise at night, about parties, about this space being used for events, and we, of course, would commit to the town that it be purely residential and not be, or transient accommodations, which we refer to as residential, and not be used as a catering or event venue. Because we, I think we got off to a little bit of a shaky start with some of our neighbors, and I think we've settled down our, our operation now to the extent that we're viewed as a good neighbor. Certainly, we're a financially viable neighbor, and we would want to maintain that relationship with the homeowners who are on that southeast corner of our property. So thank you for the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you very much. With that, I'd invite any other members of the public that would like to speak to this item this evening. Now would be the time. Somebody's got to be first, or third in this case. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dunbar, Councilmembers. I'm Bill Craig. I live at 20 Ivy Court. We share the southeast fence line with Bardessano Development. And having heard Steve's presentation and Jim's presentation tonight, I think should be known that my wife and I do support this change from being a single-family home to the larger suite facility that he's described, provided that there is a maintenance of environmental quality with regard to noise and with regard to privacy, specifically our privacy. While we would love to see Steve and Pat as neighbors for us, Julia Roberts isn't too bad a...
[laughing]
So that would be fine. But we would like to make sure that the privacy that she would require would also be privacy that we would require. And that boils down to our request for landscaping, and that landscaping be very, very specifically placed, and if we can participate in that process as well as the town with regard to trees, you know, their views scape into our yard. As there is a discrepancy in elevation there, there's a four-foot raise and then a foundation raise, and already there... raise, and already they're over the eight-foot fence that we've put in. So if we can kind of work cooperatively with regard to that, then that would satisfy just about all of our concerns on it. With, and also, you know, as long as attention is paid to noise and, and environmental issues, that, we really don't have a problem with it.
Great.
And that was it.
Thank you very much for speaking.
Sure.
Anyone else like to, actually, let's get, if we can get new speakers first, and then Mr. Treadway, if you'd like to respond, that's fine also. Ms. Alexander, please.
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much. I want to, first of all, thank all of our town staff for doing the jobs that you do. It's hard, it's not easy, and I really do appreciate the hours that you put in for our town. We have an awesome town. City Council and Mayor, I also want to thank you guys. You work really, really hard. You, you don't really get paid any money, but you really truly care about what's going on in our town. So unlike the Crags, I do not support having this, this request for an amendment of the development agreement. But I can't speak for myself first, because Megan Mason, my neighbor, and if you want to look where our property is, my address is actually 6527 Heather Street. So we are at the southeast corner of the property. And then Megan Mason, who couldn't be here tonight, is a resident at 5 Heritage Court. Now, she couldn't be here, but she did ask if I would read this letter for her. So if you'll please let me speak in Megan's voice. She was very, very sorry to not be here this evening. "To the Yountville Town Council and the Honorable Mayor Dunbar, dear ladies and gentlemen, I regret to miss this public hearing this evening, and I have asked the resident and friend, Pat Alexander, to read my letter to you regarding the above application. As a resident of Yountville for 25 years, I'm proud to say that I loved Yountville when I first moved here in 1987, and I continue to love Yountville today, even with all the changes that have occurred during these years. Yountville takes pride in its natural surrounding beauty, as well as its bountiful culinary establishments, hotels, and tasting rooms. It's always been claimed that it cares especially and equally as to its residents, as much as it does the tourists who bring a fair share of tax dollars to our dear little town. Many people who currently reside in Yountville or visit today have no idea what Yountville looked like, even as little as 10 years ago. At that time, the Washington Street Bardessano property was a single residence nestled among a beautiful six-acre vineyard. Residents and visitors alike appreciate the tranquility and rural feeling that this parcel created within our town. The planning and zoning that was thoughtfully written by a group of select Yountville residents had this parcel zoned as mixed residential. Now, with the desire to sell off their home and the land, the Bardessanos campaigned to effectively have their lot rezoned as commercial, so that they could build a 60-room inn with a single-family residence to replace their original beautiful home. To this day, I'm still amazed at how this was accomplished, and I truly feel that this has been a mistake. When the zoning was changed from mixed residential to commercial, there was very little regard for the neighbors and residents who lived in the surrounding areas. The town did not really take too much concern and thoughts about the residents. This change took place, and with that rezoning, it was determined that the southeast portion of the site would be set aside especially for a single home site for Mr. and Mrs. Bardessano. Us neighbors had to accept this new scenario. Now, the Bardessano families are not consent, are not content with just a 60-room, pardon me, a 62-room within their in-site. They want to build a bigger and more rooms from the southeast corner. Again, they're looking to change the zoning agreement to accommodate the desires. We say no, enough is enough. As residents whose homes back up against the working backside of this inn, we've had to contend with employee parking, the employee break area and cigarette area, delivery trucks and service trucks coming in at all areas of the time of day of night. And in the past, when their power went out, there was a large RV in the parking lot with a generator roaring continuously for over 24 hours. Not even to mention the amount of parties that have been noisy and disruptive well past the 10 o'clock area. When we called specifically many times to address the noises, they had turned them down for a few moments, and then the noise went right back up. The Bardessano developers have been disrespectful and rude neighbors. We see that with rezoning and the addition of rooms, of all the current disturbances is only going to increase and make it worse. We please ask you to deny this rezoning agreement. We ask you please to listen and care about the residents who sought to live in this beautiful, peaceful, and caring town. Thank you so much for your time and serious consideration to this rezoning. Sincerely, Megan and Randy Mason, 5 Heritage Court." So, it's true, she wanted to go first, so my, my, my appeal is a little bit different. Although I support Megan, she's a friend and neighbor, and we've also really worked hard for, for many, many years to ask our town council to protect this beautiful rural character that, that we all love so much. So first of all, as you well know, the history, and please excuse me, you might have to get the hook to, to make me stop talking, but this was originally zoned for residential. We did a general plan amendment. It was changed to accommodate the hotel use. Originally, the hotel was going to be single-story, but after getting into the work and realizing foundationally that there was a high water table, there needed to be an amendment and a higher-up of the areas. We, there were parties, there are parties that still go on on Wednesday nights. And while the Bardessano Development, I'm sure, absolutely find people, it hasn't been the idyllic, beautiful relationship that I wish it could be as far as neighbors go. And unlike the Crags, I'm not okay with this. Seriously, you guys, my property from the backyard extends to a little over where that corner is right there. You know, celebrities are great, Julia Roberts is wonderful, but you've got to value the people who, who live here, who work here, who volunteer, who, who care, you know, who really have a vested interest in keeping this place beautiful. And we've gotten so many hotels, do we really need two more rooms? But more than that, more than that. Our attorney, our city attorney, when 2009, with this all kept being wedged in, this wedge here, a little bit bigger, the wedge got bigger, the wedge got bigger. The attorney was very specific in making sure that that residence would be used residential, that it could not be used for a, gosh, for a TOT revenue, or that it couldn't be used for short-term rentals. Because she too saw that there may be the possibility that this could turn into an extension of the hotel. An elite, you know, granted 2,400, whatever, millionaire suite, a target suite, that's fine. Please, please don't. We love our homes, we love our neighborhoods, we love our families. I would ask that you please, please do not allow this wedge to get any bigger. Please stick to the agreement. Please deny this, this amendment to the development agreement. Pardon me, I'll get the hook myself. Thank you very, very much, and I appreciate your consideration in this matter.
Thank you very much. And if you would please leave the letter with the town clerk, so we can include it in our, our record. Thank you very much. Any other members of the public, please?
I have a prepared statement, but I have an idea for you.
And if you could, sorry, just, people tend to turn around and talk to the audience about things, but you really need to address us, and also so we can get you on the record.
Also, Mr. Mayor, we need everyone who speaks their name for the record.
Yes. I am Cheryl Parker.
Thank you.
And I live at 6523 Vista Drive in Yountville. I live in the Heritage Estates development that is behind the Bardessano complex. But I do want to read my statement, but I had a thought for the gentleman in, with the crutches. If they need a luxury, luxury accommodation, why can't they take some of their existing rooms, remodel it, and create the luxury accommodation that he's looking for? I'm against, obviously, the change in the policy. And I'm going to read my statement if I can, please. Thank you. The solution at the Bardessano complex, in my eyes, is a simple one. I refer to Attachment A, the original proposed condition of approval that states, "The single-family residence shall be used for residential purposes and at no time may be used as a transient short-term rental. I have no doubts as to why the town of Yountville Council wrote this condition into the approval of the Bardessano complex. It honors the prevailing ordinance of not allowing short-term vacation rentals." Number two, it honors the responsibility of town government to protect its residents. The approved single-family residence budding up against adjacent neighborhoods is appropriate, sensitive, and responsible to the townspeople. Number three, it honors the strength of the town council. It is obvious to me that the council has invested a great deal of time and thought and energy into the original planning of the Bardessano complex. The single-family residence stipulation for the remaining parcel was the correct decision then and now. The townspeople of Yountville must know that the town council cannot be coerced by powerful business people, and the owners of the Bardessano complex must respect and follow the original wisdom of the council. And lastly, number four, it honors the most important job the council has, land use legislation. The rural character of Yountville must always be protected, or we will lose our greatest asset. Commercial gains cannot be the ultimate goal if it breaks with respected ordinances, breaks with common sense, and breaks with the responsibility to protect the residents. The town of Yountville Council has been very considerate of the requests and needs of the Bardessano complex. The concessions the council has made have benefited the Bardessano, Bardessano complex, and it has been generous. But the concessions must stop here. Remember the condition of the approval. The single-family residence shall be used for residential purposes and at no time may be used as a transient, short-term rental. At the end of the day, I feel confident you will protect the ordinances of Yountville and honor your responsibility to protect and serve Yountville. I trust in your wisdom, your original wisdom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public, please? Welcome. You might need to raise, might need, actually, there's a button in the bottom-right corner of, of the podium that'll actually raise the whole podium level up. Okay, as long as you can speak.
Hi, everyone. I'm Chris Loubier. The lady behind me is my wife, Cheryl Parker. I live at 6523 Vista Drive in Yountville. The thrust of my wanting a little time at the podium tonight revolves around contradictions. I don't, I'm not a emotional person, I'm an engineer. Sometimes that's a very bad thing, sometimes it's a good thing. The original document that was sent to the public describing the purpose of the open portion of the meeting clearly stated that what was being presented to the council was an amendment to the original proposition for a change of use, that it would be a duplicate use, a use as a portion of the Bardessano inn and for a portion of the residence for Steve Bardessano and his wife. That document is not accurate, based on what has been presented here tonight. What has been presented is a contradiction, a specific contradiction, that the amendment is in fact to change the fundamental use of the property that, use that was agreed to on October 13th of 2009, according to the zoning design and review board, to, from a single-family home to a duplicate use for a single-family and transient occupancy. So there's a contradiction on what was published to us as the purpose of this meeting. And then there's a fundamental contradiction between Attachment A of the ZDRB document that stated, what my wife stated, which was, "You approved a single-family residence, and you, in your wisdom, and the reason I came to Yountville and I brought a lifetime of work and savings, and my business, by the way, was to approve a single-family residence." But in the attachment, it says clearly that this thing is never to be used for transient occupancy. So therein lies a second contradiction. And that is why I have an issue with what's going on right now. If, if there is a true purposeful intent here, the intent should be clearly stated, succinctly stated, and that the ultimate purpose should be described in the documentation. That hasn't been done. So I don't think we, we have really been given an opportunity to address the realities of what's being decided on here tonight. So it's an issue of contradiction. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I'll, I'll just give a heads-up to staff to respond to that, in terms of any clarification that might be required about the action that's being requested this evening. Any other members of the public like to speak? I know, Mr. Treadway, you had mentioned, or raised your hand about responding a little bit, so. Any other first speakers left? Doesn't look like it, so welcome you to return.
Yeah.
This is for the rebuttal purposes only, so this will be the final speaker.
Okay.
I'm really not offering a rebuttal, but just a comment. When, when Ms. Alexander spoke, I was certainly aware of a number of neighbor issues with Bardessano. I've been here just under two years, having arrived in about May of 2010, and I thought in these past two years that we had really improved our relationship with our neighbors. Never once has Mrs. Alexander ever called me. And we've reached out to our neighbors, at least on the other side, because we built a fence together, which, which wasn't done as part of the development and should have been done. So I'm a little bit blindsided by this ongoing animosity toward the hotel, because I thought, I thought we cleared it up. Now, just a reality check for all of us, on this, on this proposal, we're talking about an investment of somewhere between two and two and a half million dollars. If you take the square footage, 4,000 square feet in round numbers, and you talk about high-end construction, we're really looking at $500 a foot, 2 million, then you've got to landscape it, and then we've got to furnish it, and before you know it, you're 2.3, 2.4, something like that. We don't have funding in place for this. We are, Yountville Investors is very interested, but they're not going to spend any time on anything until this first hurdle is passed. If this first hurdle isn't passed, then we abandon the whole notion and, and carry on as a, as a very successful hotel, not inn, and, and keep doing what we're doing. We can be more successful and raise more money for the town with this, with this addition of a couple of suites. But I, 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 I understand our neighbor's point of view. And if I lived down on that southeast corner, I'd be very concerned too, and I respect that. And she's not here, but I encourage Ms. Alexander to call me anytime we do anything to bother the neighbors. And that goes for you all as well, please. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that's going to close the public hearing portion of this. Mr. Bardessano, as long as it falls within the rebuttal of the, the public hearing, that's fine.
Well, I, I think it does. I don't know the gentleman here, but I'm, I think I'd have to sit down and go over what he's talking about. I'm not sure I completely understand it, but what I understand we're applying for is simply to add a use to the existing use on the property which is now, we're now unable to build, and that's the, the use of it for, for the hotel purposes. I understand that the original approval denies the right to use it for transient use, but we're asking you to reconsider that in effect by allowing transient use on that property. So I don't know that that's a conflict. I think we're using the process to get that issue before you, which is, I think, what we ought to be doing. I'm, I'm available to answer any questions, Jan.
I think, well, that's going to be the final rebuttal comment, so because of the way the public hearing functions, that'll be the last comment we hear about this from the public, so. So I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this, and before I proceed, I do want to ask the staff if there's any necessary clarification regarding the action that's being presented tonight. Do you feel like it's, it's, as, has been stated in the staff report?
Yes.
Either Bob or town attorney.
Well, one, one thing I will point to is, and I'm not sure... Well, one, one thing I will point to is, and I'm not sure I got all of the points he was making on that, but the 2009 approval by, for a design review at that time was indeed for a single-family dwelling consistent with parcel four restrictions in the development agreement that designated it for that use. And this is, this action that's happening tonight is not approving anything other than setting the stage in the development agreement for a future application to come forward to consider the additional use of, using that same structure as a transient use. They're not proposing to change the structure as far from the outward appearance of it or the grounds. It's going to look and be built on the same footprint as was approved in the '09 action. So this indeed does change that set of circumstances and from the, as described in the current development agreement, restrictions.
Right, and that's what I wanted to clarify, and does Town Attorney have anything to add to that?
No, I think Bob has done a good job in summarizing.
So again, just to, to restate it again, we are approving or not approving the ability to move forward with this process at all. If we say no, then the issue goes away. If we say yes, we are not saying yes to the new proposed use, we're saying yes to the willingness for an applicant to then move forward if they so choose. We still then have the authority to evaluate at a future time, also with the Vice Mayor hopefully present, to have a, as full a body as we can, but this, again, I'll reiterate, we're not approving the change of use, but we would, we are acting for or against the ability to allow that process to happen. And as Bob in the staff report says, just for future consideration, there is no proposal to change the exterior of the site, it's purely what's happening inside. That's, that's not our issue for discussion tonight.
And I should note that if the council was to not approve the request for the amendment, the existing use would still stand, so they'd still have the authority and ability under the original development agreement as amended to develop a single-family residence.
And if we approve the action tonight, that could still happen as well. This is adding the option of the luxury suite use in addition to the residential use in the agreement.
That is, that is correct, provided that the council also approves the various use permits that have to be presented back to the council, as earlier explained.
So before we continue, I, I want to invite Councilmember Hall to explain a certain condition that he's operating under.
Yes, and I apologize after the fact for my recognition of the fact that I am actually an employee of the Poetry Inn LLC, which fortunately wasn't named earlier, but although I have not consulted the Town Attorney, I don't believe that any action taken tonight would directly affect my ability to make a unbiased decision in this, 'cause of my position as an employee for that enterprise. I don't know if there's any further discretion that I need to, or disclosure I need to make on that, other than I'm an employee of the Poetry Inn as well as their Chief Financial Officer.
And I think it should be reflected that the, that there would be no economic
Correct.
impact upon
Me, personally.
Councilmember Hall, that would be a disqualifying factor in participating in this matter.
Thank you.
And the other thing I'd like to clarify is, because there are only three of us seated here this evening, we need to have unanimous approval to pass this request tonight.
Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, that is correct, because it is an ordinance before you that would require three affirmative votes.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, is there a question of staff or process, because we're gonna continue to discuss?
Well, it's a, it's sort of a question of the process, because one of the other things that we're asking, are being asked to do is extend the design review approval period for the single-family residence from November the 3rd, 2014, to the same date in 2017. Could we do that separately from making the other decision of granting the option to either have a single-family residence or transient occupancy?
That was one component of the request by the applicant for, for that extension. It's all on the table, but that was requested by them for the purpose of, they're, I believe, uncertain when they intend to move forward with this, and the extended time would be advantageous to them.
Along the same lines, the other item you mentioned is the required landscape screening if there's no action within the next year.
Yes.
So I would assume that your question would extend to that, that if we approve as requested tonight, all those conditions fall under that. If there is a non-approval, then your, your question of, could we then approve individual parts, or is it an all-or-nothing approval?
That's my question.
And I'm not sure if you've received a clarifying answer yet.
But I, I guess I was trying to communicate that parts of it are eligible for discussion and amendment, it's within the request.
But would that require a reapplication of that request individually?
No.
Because it's really not the core request. The core request is to add this use, then the other terms fall within the added use
Correct.
request. I'm, I'm, I'm not convinced that I understand whether we could take the individual parts and approve.
No.
We're not looking at three separate votes for three different actions here.
No, let me try to clarify real quickly. The question a councilmember asked, the applicant could come back at a later time to request an extension of the design approval. That could be done outside of this. The town's ability to modify and include the landscape conditions, et cetera, goes away if the application goes away, 'cause we don't have a vehicle to negotiate the changes. That was added as a additional condition on, based on the fact that the applicant requested a revision in the existing development agreement.
So I'm gonna take that as, this is an all-or-nothing decision tonight, and then if pieces of that all-or-nothing decision are not approved, then the applicant can come back at a future time, but we're not going to divide this up into different pieces for, for action tonight.
Well, I'd agree with Bob. You could look at the date, you know, they requested an extension to, that is the one thing you could take out of it, because they do have the right to come deal with that separately.
And that would come in the form of a motion. If there's a motion to just hypothetically approve one of the conditions that's being requested tonight, but not all of them, we could take that action, but that would, in effect, be a no vote to the overall request.
It would be, you could act affirmatively on the overall request, but modify portions of it within the request.
But I'm, I'm asking if the reverse is also possible, if, so, it's the, the use addition, it's the extension of design review, and it's the requirement for landscape screening. Those three components, I think, are basically what make up tonight's request. Is that accurate?
And I believe we also added a portion in there about the fees.
Impact fees, depending on the use. But my question is, can a motion be made for what I call one of the lesser conditions, either the impact fee issue, the screening issue, or the design review extension? If, if a motion is to approve any one of those, but not to approve the change in use, just a matter of the language of the motion?
Let me, if you look in the package of materials that have been presented, the applicant has set forth what they are applying for, and that is the change of use to allow for the transient use, to allow for a different configuration, which will ultimately have to come back, but on the same footprint of the, of the previously approved single-family residence, and that the additional components that are part of the ordinance before you and the amendment have been added by staff as ancillary issues of concern to staff. So if the council, the town council denies the application, I think it would be challenging at, at best for the town council to then say, "But now you have to follow these other conditions." Now, if the applicant wishes to, to say, "But we still would like to have our, our extension," certainly while that's not, at least in the document that I have before me, part of this document, I've gotta imagine the applicant would be interested in having that considered.
Does that clarify your position?
Well, it doesn't. Maybe if I explain what my thinking process is about this, and that is, after listening to Mr. Bardessano, and thinking about the, the state of the economy and building costs and everything, if we were to extend the design review approval period to 2017, and he had the opportunity to come back and ask if, that, when they were in a position to make a change, it seems to me like that would be, make more sense to me, but that's why I brought it up.
Okay, I'm gonna respond to that, but I want to invite you to have any comments about that part of the discussion, if you'd like.
Well, I, I, I think I understand the question. I'm not, I, I think what the applicant has basically put forward is whether or not the use component can change, and that's what we're specifically trying to answer or resolve. If that is the case, then obviously, you know, we would have these conditions we would make as a requirement of that, including we would allow an extension, or we could deny it, we could strike that. But I think the first requirement is to either accept or deny the, the application or amendment as presented. Is that?
And I would agree with that, and I think the point being made is, if, if we deny the application, as Town Attorney just stated, it's, it's fair, it's up for discussion about the appropriateness of saying no to your main request, but we'd like to have you take, you know, clean up some of these other things we'd like you to clean up. It would be, is that, is that what you're asking for?
No, but anyway, that's, I understand your position.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that you understand what we're asking
I do.
to do tonight. Okay, if, if, then that's fine.
The, the issue is what's before you first, and the fundamental issue before the town council this evening is the request to change the use and allow and permit for the consideration of an amendment which will, if, if it is approved, set in motion, further applications for design and other use components. But the fundamental issue before you tonight is this, is the amendment, and the amendment being, again, because there does seem to be a little confusion still, adding the condition, the ability to have transient use or a single-family residence. Because right now, the way the development agreement's written, it prohibits transient use and requires or restricts the use to single-family residence. That's the core of the request that's brought before us tonight. That is correct.
And what I think is causing some confusion are, as, as Bob stated, the staff's conditions that have been added to what would be, would be acted on in future steps. If there's a, if there's a no vote tonight, we never get to the future steps.
Great, I, I was just going to point out, those are conditions of approval. If there's no approval...
Those conditions go away.
Correct.
And approval isn't approval of that use, it's approval of the option to come forward with a specific application for that changed transient use. We are not approving the transient use tonight.
You are not.
We are approving the process of applying for that transient use, so...
Which is the amendment to the development agreement. That is correct.
So I want to make sure that we all understand what's being asked, and then we can discuss the issues of that.
I do.
Okay, and you're clear?
I think I'm clear.
Okay, so let's continue with discussion and potential action. Specifically, I'll invite Councilmember Hall to make his comments.
I get to go first. These are always very delicate and sensitive issues, as everyone in the room and probably everyone in the community is aware. We've had a lot of these come up period, in the last several, well, since I've been on council. Let me, first of all, state that I walk by that corner almost every day, at least the school days, 'cause I live on Mulberry, and I walk over what we know collectively as the Troll Bridge and down past the Hopper Creek Apartments, and that today is an undeveloped vacant piece of ground, and I'd like to see it be something. I, I always know what I had understood it to be. I didn't understand why it was set up to be what it was going to be. I felt, having walked through that parking lot, that it would be difficult to get to that being a residence if that were my house. I'm not making a determination on that, I'm just saying that would have been my perception. I also understand that as a landowner or property owner, you go through an evolution of sorts, specifically as the economy evolves, and certainly as the condition of the Bardessano Inn has evolved as well. It's seen how its customer base is reflected and recognizing, you know, what it needs to serve its customers, and I, so I certainly can weigh that with regards to this request and, and what it means. What, you know, what is probably the most challenging is that we've got very real people, very real residents, neighbors of ours, who are not necessarily as excited about the opportunity to add two new inn rooms as the businessperson to me might run out and say, "Yeah, you know, more, more TOT for the town, and that's gonna help," and I, and I can't disagree specifically as to what that might mean, but then I think, in general, as we look at what a residence or an individual person's residential property might mean, notwithstanding that it would have been a very large piece of property with a large house on it, what two transient occupancy or transient uses rooms might mean from a noise perspective or environmental impact perspective, and I would only say that sometimes my neighbors, it would be better to have a hotel as neighbors than to have the people that I have, and I don't say that disrespectfully to my neighbors, I say that in the past. I have known neighbors that may not necessarily have been as quiet or have as many barbecues as mine have in the past. I don't think people in the hotel might do that. But that being said, you know, there are benefits to some extent by having, it also be vacant from time to time. It will be very quiet when people are not there. At least that would be my perspective. Yeah, a use as a single-family residence is probably in some ways equally as intensive, although I can't validate that, I don't have any quantitative measures to say that it would be more or less intensive, but my assumption would be that should we make the decision to move forward, that the Bardessano property and the Bardessano family, which has been a part of this community for far longer than I, would ensure that there was adequate control of any environmental factors that might come out to the residents of the community at large. A, a comment that, I'm sure I got this wrong, but one of the residents of our community, I believe it's Cheryl Parker made, that I wrote down, or maybe it was one of the others, was about, you know, the responsibility of the town for land use legislation, and we just had situations several meetings ago where we had an issue where an application for use change was, was presented, and it was in a different light. This one, this land use change or the use change of this particular parcel is one in which it's already encompassed in the same block as the existing use of a hotel. It's not like it's on the corner of Old Town Historic. Yes, it is across the creek and behind a fence of a residential segment of, of the town, and I recognize that. But again, going back to the comment of, you know, single-family residential homes may not necessarily be, or maybe they are more intensive than transient occupant use, I, I just don't know. I don't have any quantitative measures to that. So in general, you know, I, I do understand that, you know, conditions of ownership and land use change. There's nothing to say that a new, if, if the property were to be sold, that a new owner of that property wouldn't change what they wanted to do to build a house if the Bardessano family decided not to own that corner, and what might come next, 'cause we don't know. And I think what they're asking here is really just, what I would look at is an option to do something different. That doesn't mean they don't have the right to build a single-family residence, should that option, or should that opportunity present itself once again. And again, I've, I've always found that that corner was a little awkward when I walked to school every day, as to, you know, what is it? And how, how could it be a residence? The residence on the other side of the creek, I get that, 'cause they're beautiful homes, and I want to make sure we, we respect and protect that, but I, I, I feel that there's probably something that the Bardessano family and, and obviously the Bardessano Inn is trying to accomplish, and, you know, a change in the use is not necessarily something that would, I would hinder, I don't believe. So I feel comfortable with at least how it's presented, given that I know that the, the proper development practices would be undertaken to minimize any impact.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker.
I understand also the concerns of the neighbors and also the concerns of Mr. Bardessano, and I, too, have...
And I too walk that way. I, I walk around town all the time. I love that little walk through the park with the Chaos Pamplona. And I too have wondered about that lot and actually had a hard time visualizing it as, it as a single-family home, to tell you the truth. But nonetheless, according to the, to the ordinance, what it says is that this is compatible with uses authorized in and the regulations prescribed for the land used district within which the real property is located. I, I, what I think we are agreeing to, if we agree, is the option. And I think that what you're saying to us is that based on what the economy looks like in the next four years is when you're going to make the decision on whether or not you come back and ask for that use to actually be in rooms rather than a single-family home. Which in that case, that's why I was sort of trying to push the point of, well, if you, you know, had an extended period of time before which that let the, the ordinance would lapse in the 12 months and you had the extended time, would that give you more time to judge adequately whether or not it would, you know, be realistic to build a single-family home there? And since you've already purchased a home for yourself and your wife, would you then try to sell that property or whatever? But it would be something that you would be deciding at a future date when the economy, real estate seemed to be better. So I see and understand all of those points. And, you know, in grand scheme of things, I think the, you've done a wonderful service to the community because of the Arroyo Grande development that you, you know, allowed in order to develop the property. I did live here when it was your beautiful private home and vineyard, and I just loved it too. But I, I can see both sides. And so I'm going to have to come to some decision after I hear the mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to focus mainly on some comments that Councilmember Hall made and kind of expound on that. I was on this council when we approved the Bartisano Inn Hotel, at the time, and maybe now Hotel Project. And there were several concerns about the impacts to the neighbors and the town in general. And I'm not going to rehash all those. But I feel like tonight, the concerns and the opposition to this particular action have more to do with the original rezoning and development of the site, to be perfectly honest. What, if we look purely at what's being asked of us tonight, it's the, the willingness to allow the process to move forward with the ability to say no at any point, we collectively, as a majority of the council, feel like it's no longer in the best interest of our community. And while we all, I'm sure, encourage all of our businesses, businesses to perform at their highest level, my number one concern is not whether the Bartisano Hotel property is, is in a better position to compete against our up-valley neighbors. Yes, we benefit from the hotel occupancy tax primarily, but we have to be also at least as much, if not more concerned about the impacts on, on our community. I don't see this request as impacting the community any more than, than has already been impacted by the change. I think it's, it's always challenging the unknown of change. We deal with it on a regular basis at different levels. We did, as Councilmember Hall mentioned, have a situation about another shoulder property, a shoulder neighborhood. How does it impact the neighbors compared to the benefit to the, the community? We said it was, it was an excessive inappropriate impact, and we denied that action. In other cases, we've said, we feel like the action won't have an adverse negative impact. So if we were talking about a wholesale change to the corner of this property, I'd feel differently. I think we will see little to no change in impact, whether it be a residential use or a transient occupancy use, given that the town has better authority over the operations of the hotel than we would over the single-family residents. So I can support this first step. I'm not guaranteeing we are going to agree on the conditions of steps moving forward, because we may find out that the applicant has ideas that we're not comfortable with. But I think it would be premature for us to say, no, I'm not willing to consider that. And, and yes, this is a change from the original development agreement. That's what we're here to discuss. But I'm at least willing to let the process play out and see, see where it takes us. So if there aren't any other additional comments, I would ask for a motion if there is one to be had.
I move that the town council approve ordinance number 403-12, approving amendment number two to the Bartisano project development agreement, approved by ordinance number 337-04, effective April 15, 2004, and amended by ordinance number 36806, amendment number one.
Second.
I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorenbecker?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes. So with the three votes that does pass, so that's all the action that's been asked for us this evening. We're actually not really in a position to take additional public comment.
I just want to thank you for your time and your, and your consideration of what we've presented. The new condition will certainly beautify that corner if nothing else. We'll be back to see the staff soon about what we mean by temporary landscaping, and we'll do some things down there that we otherwise would not be doing.
Okay.
So I just want to assure you we'll do that. You'll get a chance to look at what the hotel folks have in mind in a more complete way
Certainly.
when they amend their use permit or want...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to all the folks that spoke tonight and shared their, their views. With that, I'll invite Councilmember Mueller to return. If somebody could give her the heads up that we would like her to return. There she is. Welcome back. We're going to move right ahead to item 14, which is an action based on an interview we had earlier this evening to consider appointment to our Parks and Community Services Commission for a non-voting high school member. Is there an additional staff report that would, to explain this action? Or should we just get right to the results of that vote? Let's get right to the results of the vote. Basically, what we were discussing earlier this evening, we interviewed local resident Denning DeFur, and he has applied for the vacancy for a high school non-voting member to the Parks and Community Services Commission. And if I could ask the deputy clerk this evening to read off the, the votes from earlier this evening.
You have the yes votes, included Councilmember Dorenbecker, Mayor Dunbar, Councilmember Hall, Councilmember Mueller.
So that's unanimous.
And they are unanimous, and Denning DeFur would then be appointed to this commission.
Very good. So Denning, if you're watching, and the rest of the DeFur family, congratulations. Thank you once again for your willingness to continue to serve your community. And also just as a reminder, in case folks aren't, aren't seeing the vacancy, but Vice Mayor Chilton is excused this evening, so he was not part of the interview or the voting process. With that, let's move on to item 15, staff informational reports. I believe we have at least a couple. I'll start off with Mr. Wattsworth.
Okay. Even Mayor Dunbar, council. There's going to be a Parks and Community Service Commission meeting on Thursday at 6:00. One of the things we'll be talking about is capital improvement program. The other thing is the North Yountville Bike Route Project. This is a $200,000 grant that the town received to look at bike lanes and pedestrian path in Yountville Community Park. This is a federally funded grant. There are federal requirements. One of those requirements is look at any potential effect on Yountville Community Park. So we posted notices in the park. We sent out a media release, and we're inviting comments from the commission and the public on the plan to put a path on the south side of the park around the picnic area connecting to the path at the restrooms. So those are, the staff reports are available, and we have more information here at Town Hall if people are interested before the meeting. And then also, there'll be a presentation at the meeting.
So it sounds like Mr. DeFur has to change his plans for Thursday evening. He's now committed to the Parks and Community Services meeting.
Previously scheduled meeting, yes.
All right. Also, I believe, is there an informational report regarding our wonderful new recreational guide?
Yes, thank you. So the Parks and Recreation Summer Guide is hot off the presses and will be in local Yountville mailboxes and P.O. boxes tomorrow. And if you want to get yours ahead of time, or for some reason don't have one in your mailbox, stop on by the community center or Town Hall. Thank you.
Are there any other informational reports this evening? No? Great. We'll move on to council meeting reports and comments. We'll start off with any council meeting reports. Let's see. Flood control did meet today, but it was only in closed session, so I have no report from that meeting. I'd invite Councilmember Mueller to just give us a very brief recap on the Napa County League of Governments meeting last week in Calistoga.
As you mentioned, we met in Calistoga last Thursday, and it was the county's turn to host. So they chose their venue as the Napa County Fairgrounds. And you hear me emphasizing county, because I want to make it the distinct information that this is different than the Napa, the Napa Expo and Fairgrounds, which is in, in the city of Napa. So at that meeting, there is a new director who has taken over responsibility for, for pretty much all the aspects of running the fairgrounds. And she's got a lot of new ideas and told us about a lot of things they have planned. They're going to be inviting new people to join on some of the committees and the boards. So I think we'll be hearing an outreach from her. And it was, she also informed us that they've just lost 20% of their revenue from the previous action of the state and its problems, as we all know. So they were going to be doing a lot of creative thinking, trying to make up those losses. So it was a good meeting and very informative.
Thank you very much. A meeting that I'm going to report on actually took place as the Napa Valley Transportation Authority. Basically, that's the Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency Board, following the Jamison Canyon widening and safety project groundbreaking that took place the morning of April 4. And that, that's a very exciting project to see the lane widening and safety of that Highway 12 Jamison Canyon corridor. And there were more state and local elected officials that I've seen in some time, and federal officials as well. So, but following that meeting, the NVTA met specifically to discuss a proposal on the countywide sales tax initiative, potential initiative for, we got final language to consider. We have not voted on that language, but I wanted to bring it to the council for comment so that I could bring it back to the Transportation Authority when we do have a vote coming up in the next few weeks. Basically, the Road Repair Maintenance Act, the language of which is still, the title of which is still being worked out, but it was finally, they finally kind of filled in all the blanks. It would be a 25-year sales tax, starting in 2018, which is when the Measure A flood control tax would be sunsetting. So the plan would be no additional tax, but it would take over as soon as that Measure A tax was going to expire. So there'd be no net increase in the local sales tax. But basically, a redirection of that tax money would go toward, specifically to road maintenance and repair. And one of the other significant components was that it was finally determined that the initiative will be presented for 99% of the money to go specifically to road maintenance programs. And 1%, up to 1% would be administrative costs. But the big debate there was, would any of that 99% be diverted to other concerns? The largest concern being congestion relief. And that was mostly the concern of American Canyon, where they have the significant congestion relief concern that they're, they're dealing with. They basically conceded that, that as a countywide measure, we needed complete unanimous support, and they were willing to support this 99%, as were several of the stakeholder groups. For Yountville, we could be estimating somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000 a year that we could then put toward road maintenance and repair, which is very close to the number that we've been hearing that we need to continue maintaining our roads specifically. That's not a number cast in stone, of course, but that's the general estimate. The other significant piece of this measure is that 6.67% of whatever this total number becomes, collectively in the county, the county and all the municipalities would need to basically come up with 6.67% equivalent money from other sources other than the sales tax to fund alternative transportation projects like the Vine Trail, the countywide bike path system that we have previously seen and discussed. So the concern there was if 99% of the money went straight to road repair, there would not be any money left for programs outside that very restricted parameter. So that's the way it's being written and presented. We will be voting on it soon, because it needs to be, if this is going to qualify for November, it needs to be formally adopted very soon. So I wanted to present that and hear any feedback that the council had that I could take back for the discussions during the board deliberations. So with that, if there are any comments. Councilmember Mueller, do you have any comments about that?
Again, my concern, I think I've expressed it before, is the 25 years. I think that we, as local government and county government, really have a responsibility to, you know, really put together a plan. I mean, these roads are going in disrepair. I mean, this shouldn't be a surprise to us. I mean, this is something that, you know, really should be at the top of our list. And certainly supplementing that, I am in favor for. But 25 years, it just speaks to me that, you know, can't I plan and get something organized that instead of just relying on a tax for 25 years? So that is absolutely my major concern, the longevity of this, when we, I think, really should putting, be putting our heads together and not just always relying on, you know, that length of a tax to really take care of some of the stuff that we need to do. So that's my major concern.
To make sure I understand it, so I can present that point, you're, you support the concept of the, of the tax measure on the ballot, but your concern is not finding funding for projects in other ways other than relying on this sales tax to fund the road repair concerns. Is that...
I mean, to use a tax, you know, maybe 10 years is really the longest that I would really feel comfortable going. It's really putting, you know, a pretty long-term Band-Aid on our, on our problem. I, my crystal ball's not good enough to say I'm not going to, you know, something else isn't going to come up after that, or, you know, I don't know what's going to happen. So 25 years is just, it seems to me that I'm taking the lazy way out by saying, sure, let's just put another tax on for 25 years. For 10, it's going to make me work hard and get this solved in, in other ways. But to take care of the immediate problem in an acute situation for, you know, taking care of our roads, I'm fine. 10 years, a chronic solution by doing this, that's my concern.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Yeah. First of all, I would like to say...
Yeah, first of all, I would like to say, I mean, we've all gotten uncomfortably comfortable with the Measure A money, and I think it's been put to good use, and we've all benefited from it. So I, you know, I am, I was supportive of Measure A, and I would say I'd be, I'm supportive of, as it sunsets, because I'm now comfortable with the fact that that tax is being levied on us. And we recognize that we all do use roads, not just in Yountville, but county roads, so obviously there should be some, there should be some ability to fund that and, and the maintenance and development thereof. But I will agree also with Councilmember Muller that we need to be better at managing our expenses and putting aside monies in our existing budgets, rather than continuing to levy additional taxes on the users potentially of the road, but also those people that are coming in and putting sales tax into our coffers, if those monies could be put into other uses, not necessarily just to maintain the roads. And it does seem somewhat inappropriate that we continue to levy that tax for an extended period of time, and we should be able to manage, as a county, as a municipality, as in, as a government, how much money we actually need to go out and continue to raise through taxes versus tightening our belt in other areas. I don't have a specific solution for that, but I, I would agree in general with her comments on that, that 25 years seems excessive, it becomes an entitlement, it's not gonna go away at 25, they'll just, we'll roll it over to the, I don't know, to the next, to the next 25 years. And that's my, that would be my concern principally. But in general, I mean, I, I understand it, and I think, you know, at least with the sunset of the Measure A monies, which I believe were very well-used, and we've gotten international accolades from that, I, I don't know that we're gonna get the same for repairing our roads with the same monies.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Well, I have an opposite viewpoint, actually, because over the next 25 years, I don't think that the level of use of the roads is going to diminish, I think it's going to increase. And therefore, the roads are going to need more and more, you know, fixing up, and they're going to take more and more, more and more wear and tear. And I think that having a stable revenue source to take care of the roads is in our best interest. And so while I know 25 years is a, a, you know, big number, one cent isn't, so I, I, I don't feel that way. I feel that it's a, I think it's rational and pragmatic.
Thank you. Well, that's some good feedback that I can bring up in our discussion. A couple of points just to share, maybe to address some of the concerns that you've mentioned about the reliance on the tax. One is the, the point that this is a sales tax, which is predominantly visitor-generated, not exclusively, obviously, but it's sharing the pain, so to speak, about who's impacting the conditions of the roads. Everyone is then accountable and paying for it. That's one philosophy. Also, the needs, as Councilmember Doran Becker just stated, the concern is, for a shorter time period, there just wouldn't be enough money generated for long-term sustainability of, of basically the self-help tax. The concern is that we're never gonna see the state and federal support that used to be there and that is required to really maintain the roadways without generating some new revenue stream. So those are some of the issues that have been debated, because your, your comments have been brought up by members of the board and the public also.
Can I make one more, Mayor Dunbar?
Certainly.
I, I think the only other issue I have with regards to a sales tax, and, you know, go back to Economics 101, is 100% regressive, in that those people that cannot afford an additional 1% are the ones that are most greatly impacted. And so a sales tax, by the nature of it being a sales tax, is regressive, and it is counterintuitive that those that can afford it least have the greatest impact on them, because they're, my supposition would be the least likely to use the roads to that extent. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe a regressive tax would be appropriate for funding our roads, but I don't necessarily agree with that.
Okay, thank you very much. And so this basically is to present this issue to the voters in November, and the, the main goal, I think, of the board is to provide an option for self-help. So, thank you for that feedback. Any general comments from the council that aren't necessarily meeting reports? Councilmember Hall?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Dunbar. I had the opportunity this last weekend to go out and visit the Wildlife Rescue Center of Napa County's, we'll call it Temporary/Long-Term Site, which is just south of where the Recta Reservoir facility is, where the water treatment plant, or water treatment plant is for, for Yountville. They're right now in the process of trying to recruit volunteers. This is an all-volunteer organization that rehabilitates injured, orphaned, or ill wildlife. The busiest time of the year is right now, and having the opportunity to have gone out there as the former president and an interested individual, although I have my own small mouths to feed, they have a great need for volunteers, so I would encourage anyone who is eligible, available, and interested to contact them at 224-HAWK, H-A-W-K, that's 224-4295. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Muller?
Yes, I'd just like to also remind all of our residents who actually pay a bill to Upper Waste Management Authority that there was a stamped card in with their last water bill, and there were some options, it just, if you live in Yountville, you just move straight to question six. And what we're trying to do is really get a sense, since we're gonna be doing budgeting back here very shortly, how many residents in town really would like the town-wide cleanup. So we should be having that information in probably the middle of May to provide to the council, to see, you know, how many people felt strongly enough about it to really turn in their cards and, and mark, you know, as an alternate, that maybe we would either fund it by the council, or not fund it at all, or use a, a surcharge as part of that funding that would be made by all the, the end-users. So I think that's gonna be some interesting information, so everybody, that little card that is sitting on your kitchen table, please fill it out and get it in the mail, no stamp required.
That's a very good reminder about how we need to hear from the community. We heard requests tonight about extending trolley service, and we've already heard numbers about how expensive that could be to, to pull that off, so we're gonna have some budget decisions to make. And so folks need to speak up, or hopefully not just sit on the sidelines and then, and then wish they'd spoken up in time. So, any other general comments?
No, thank you.
I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. The Superior Court of California in the county of Napa is, again, seeking grand jury participants. The term of office is July 1, 2012, to June 30, 2013, so one-year commitment. And the open houses, there are two dates for open houses for this Superior Court Grand Jury interview process, or at least informational gathering. Tuesday, April 24, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00, and Wednesday, April 25, from 5:30 to 6:30. Both will be held in the jury assembly room of the historic courthouse. So if you're interested in being a member of the Napa County Grand Jury, now's your chance. There are a couple of dates there for you to go find out what's what. I think that is it for me. We're gonna just quickly look at future agenda items. Countywide bicycle plan from the NCTPA, a wayfinding sign program update, sales tax ordinance, we were just discussing that. And another, is this really only the second budget workshop? Are we using different terms? You can pull us into this budget conversation multiple times.
No, we're just trying to number them to keep track.
We've talked more than twice about the budget, though.
Budget comes up in a lot of my conversations.
Yeah.
Correct. This'll be our budget overview and summary general fund, so we'll have those spreadsheets that you all love.
And this is prior to our actual budget workshops?
It is, it is. It's not the detailed department review yet, it's just the general overview.
Plenty more fun to come.
Yes.
Lots of fun.
I'm gonna keep watching those numbers and make sure they go up.
Yes.
Okay, any other future agenda items for us to be worried about? No? Then we do have a closed session on the agenda. I'm assuming that we do have action, and if so, how long do you anticipate that action taking?
15 minutes.
About 15? Okay.
Wow.
So we will adjourn to closed session, and once we're finished, we will come out, and if there's any reportable action, if not, we will then move to adjournment. So thank you all very much. You're welcome to wait a few minutes and come back to hear us say goodbye.